Okay, everyone. Thank you very much for joining. I hope everybody is well, wherever you are in the world. Hoping that you are really glad to join, because we are really glad to have you on board for this first session of the first ever youth track hosted during GeoWeek 2021. So I will just start sharing. So my name is Florian Francis Kakis. I work for the Group on Earth Observations Secretariat here in Geneva, Switzerland. And I'm really glad to kick off this series of four days events in Geo during the GeoWeek. So as you can see here, the title of the youth track is Accelerating Action with You, which relates to the title of the GeoWeek 2021, which is Accelerating Actions. And just ask my speakers if they can mute themselves. Thank you very much and the hosts. That would be great. Okay, so let me start again. Yes, the Group on Earth Observations is really glad to welcome this youth track to bring together a community of young people, whether they are students, early career scientists, policymakers, and just everyone who is interested in Earth observations and geoengagement priorities, which are the Sustainable Development Goals, Climate Action, and Disaster Risk Reduction. I'll just go into a brief slide to introduce Geo to those who are not so familiar with. And if you need more clarification, don't hesitate to ask the questions in the chat or later during the discussion. We are here to make a welcoming space and to answer everyone's questions. So Geo, as you can see, is an international partnership of member states, participating organizations, and associates, all working together to promote the use of Earth observations and to promote the sharing of data and all the knowledge related to Earth observations. We have in our current work program 60 different activities that aim at facilitating the collaboration of all our members in various domains where Earth observations are critical. And as I said before, we have currently three engagement priorities, which are the Sustainable Development Goals, the Climate Action, and Disaster Risk Reduction. I will just ask again if you can mute yourselves. Thank you very much. Okay, so here we are gathered during this first event of the youth track. And I will just outline the agenda here and the objectives. So first of all, we will have some, and sorry, the agenda is wrong. So first, we will have a message from the Geo Secretary at Director, Yana Geborgen. Then we'll have a sharing of perspectives on equality, diversity, and inclusion from Natalie Petterelli. And then we'll go to an open discussion about HOKAN, a youth community of practice acts to help more young people to be included in Geo. And this will be moderated by Francis Somandi. The objectives of this first day, and as I said, we want with this series of four events to move towards a community of practice, to bring together anyone who is interested in Earth observations and Geo's work. So we want to get to know you first. And at this point, I will ask all the attendees if you can put in the chat your name, so your full name, your affiliation, and what do you do. So if you're a student and early career scientist, basically just so that we know who is in the session. And secondly, and the most important one, after the presentations, we will have an open discussion. And to build this community of practice, this youth community of practice, sorry, we want to gather your insights. So what are your thoughts? What is your experience? What are your ideas that can help create a Geo community of practice focused on and led by young people? So anyone is welcome to speak up at any point, whether in the chat or by raising your hands. So I'll just go into the meeting protocol. So please be aware that this session is being recorded. You will have access to the recording after the event has stopped in Ermid directly. Please make comments at any time directly in the chat. Or if you want to speak, please raise your hand and we will invite you to the stage. We will run some polls in the poll staff. So please answer them when we put them on and we will show the results after, once they're ended. And please, please, this is a community-driven meeting and a series of community-driven meetings. So please speak at any time, ask any question, bring forward any question you want. These events are just made for it. So please, we really, really welcome all of what you have to bring to the table. Thank you very much. I'll now hand the floor to our director, Yana Geborgen. So please, Yana, up to you.
Thank you very much, Florian. And good morning, good evening, good afternoon, everybody. A very, very warm and very excited welcome. We're kicking off our GeoWeek 2021 with this youth track. It's the very first event that takes place and starts out this week of events that we believe bring very rich and exciting content. And I must say, this is the event that I am personally most excited. Please don't tell this to anyone outside of this space. But truly, we've been looking forward to this. We've been hoping that many of you would be joining us from all around the world. And it's really wonderful to see this colorful squares popping up on the right-hand side of the screen. So my name is Yana Geborgen. I was born and raised in Armenia. Science didn't love me very much. So in school, I sort of didn't really resonate with science. I was more of the language, the liberal arts person, and I really liked communication. So after school, I went down the path of doing the kinds of work that would put me in a space with people. I did some teaching, I taught foreign language. I ended up working in the field of international development with the American Red Cross in Armenia. And that's where I really, really loved the power of human interaction, the power of communication, the power of all that to do good. And multicultural communication was really the thing that was driving me. And I'm so just happy that today's event really brings all of these favorite aspects of mine into one place: multiculturalism, communication, sharing, learning from one another. So kudos to those of you who have found your way into this event. We're so glad you're here. The Group on Earth Observations is all about multiculturalism. We are an intergovernmental partnership of some 113 countries that are represented here officially by their governments, but really by their communities and by the people. We also have 130 and growing participating organizations and associates from the public sector, private sector, civil society, who are all collectively part of this one single vision, ensuring that any decisions that we take about our future, about societal needs, are informed by reliable environmental information that is underpinned by Earth observations. If you are here, then you definitely know a thing or two about Earth observation, data, GIS, environmental information. So we're all part of this collective action. If we are to achieve the kind of future we want ourselves, we clearly need to achieve transformational change. And in my view, the youth are the protagonists of change. So if we are to be successful in our ambitions, we have to work with the youth, with the young people, and through the young people. So it's really high time for us here in Geo to figure out a way how to integrate young voices so that they're part, so that you are part of systematic direction setting in Geo. And we think that establishing a community of practice driven by the young voices, that's keen to learn from those who have much broader, much longer experience, but also ready to share your insights, that is going to be part of unlocking our full potential to drive the kind of change that we need. We have much to learn from the young people. The youth are so much more adapted to the current needs. If we are to be driving transformational change, we need to be changing the way we interact with the environment, with the nature around us. We need to be changing the way we consume things. We need to be changing the way we communicate and we perceive communication. And we're really looking to you to help us get savvy and get better at this kind of change, changing our own culture, changing our own ways of doing things within our own private lives, but also in our professional environments. I really invite you, those who are on this call and who will stay for the next four days, to just be completely open-minded and be bold in making suggestions and sharing with us what you'd like to gain from a forum, such as what we're proposing, a community of practice. How would you like to be heard? How would you like to be involved? If you don't know exactly what opportunities exist in Geo, that's fine. I look to this set of events as a friendly encounter. You run into a coffee shop, you're sitting down with a cup of coffee, and you just engage in a conversation with the person to your right. Before you know it, you have planned out a year together. That's what I would love for us to do together. We may not have all the answers today about how exactly we're going to work with the young voices in Geo, but let's seed some ideas. Let's put down some kernels that we can then nurture into some real action-oriented activities. Our Geo community is so vast. We have the private sector involved, we have policymakers involved, we have scientists, technical people, we have philanthropists involved. There is so much we can do together if we just do better in communicating across communities. And that is what I really hope, that this youth community of practice will show us the way. It would be fantastic to see the youth community of practice to consist of professionals, young professionals, mid-career professionals, students from all walks of life, not just from different geographies, but really from all kinds of orientations, from all kinds of professional fields. You will become the future policymakers, you will become the future politicians, you will be the activists, you will be the technologists. So the more varieties of the communities that we have in this community of practice, the more aware we will be of our respective sort of preferences, peculiarities, and the more we will be able to achieve rich constructive communication. I firmly believe that our ability to integrate communities, to integrate perspectives, to integrate mediums of communication is going to unlock the potential that a youth community of practice can bring to Geo to power and enrich our future direction. So once again, I really thank you for being here. You will be hearing from some of the speakers who have already had certain experience in working in Geo, and I hope they'll share their positive experiences, maybe also share some cautionary tales. But I also hope that we've attracted some new faces who are just here to explore and see what this is all about. One thing is for certain, we are in the golden age of Earth observation. Data, as they say, is the new oil. So how are we going to work together to extract the most value from this data? What are you going to use this data for? What action are you going to inspire? How are you going to use this multilateral platform? How are you going to turn the ears of the government to hear the message that you want to convey? What do you expect from a community like Geo? These are some of the questions that I would invite you to probe over the next four days. And I really hope and I look forward to all of this culminating in the launch of the first and only Geo Youth Community of Practice. And I will just absolutely look forward to connecting and working with you and integrating the young voices into the mainstream work of Geo so that this becomes a systematic, sustained relationship. So without further ado, Florian, I'm going to turn this back over to you so we can kick off the program.
Thank you, thank you very much, Yana, for this very enthusiastic and motivational address. So we're really glad to have the community coming together and have new members joining. I see that there are many new faces in the chat. So it's really, it's really cool to have this series of events. And thank you, of course, for your support. So I just want to emphasize something that you said, maybe go a bit further. So we, as the youth track and the youth community of practice that will be created following these four events, we really want not only to have young people on board, but we want also to create links with the community. And this means with the work program activities, with the Geo community at large, and also with the industry. I see many people from the, from private companies who manifested in the chat. So I think this is a topic that we also should explore in the discussion that will follow. And I'm really glad, really glad that this is happening. Thank you. So now I would invite Natalie Petterelli to share her screen and to present on the perspective of the equality, diversity, and inclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Florian. Let me just share my screen. Is it all working?
All well, thank you.
Fantastic. So hello, everyone. My name is Natalie Petterelli. They told me to put you a bit of a bio presenter. So I thought that's a great opportunity to show you how I look on a good hair day. And so I'm a scientist at the Zoological Society of London. I'm a conservation biologist who work on climate change ecology, so working with animals. And I use Earth observation for informing conservation. I'm also the UK Principal of the on Geo Program Board, and I'm the Chair of the Equality, Diversity, and Inclusion subgroup. And my interest in equality, diversity, and inclusion started a long time ago. Well, being a woman in science gets you straight into, in working in conservation, gets you straight into a discussion about equality, diversity, and inclusion. 10 years ago or so, I founded an initiative called Subbox Science, which is about promoting women and non-binary scientists and the science that they do in open public spaces. And that has really been an initiative that helped me get to grips with a lot of issues around EDI. As we grew this initiative to originally just one event in London to now more than, events in more than 60 cities in 40 countries, including a lot of speakers, volunteers, and organizers. So how did the EDI subgroup came to life in Geo? And why am I talking to you about this? If we are to try to diversify Geo's community and the group of people that contribute to Geo's mission, we have to think about all the potential barriers or issues. And a subgroup was really a good way to start a conversation around those barriers and issues. So in early 2020, the Geo Program Board really recommended the creation of that subgroup, whose strategic aim is to develop Geo as an institution that provides a fair, supportive, and encouraging networking environment. So basically, for this group, the mission is to think about what can Geo do to facilitate not only attracting a diverse view of perspective, but also retaining them. And in that subgroup, we are really looking at how to embed decision and initiative within all the Geo activities and decisions. The initial focus for that subgroup was around gender geography and generation, generation meaning diversity in generational representation. Therefore, the link with today's event. Now, the initial discussion within that subgroup, as it was formed, really highlighted that it was quite important for Geo to position itself in terms of its vision around equality, diversity, and inclusion. And so we thought that the best way to do that is to put an EDI statement, to be clear as to what Geo wants to achieve in terms of equality, diversity, and inclusion. That statement was one of the first outputs of the subgroup, and it was approved recently, last previous spring. What does it entails? It's a statement that has been built around five pillars, namely oversight and accountability, community leadership and advocacy, creating a welcoming and supporting environment, outreach and engagement, and empowerment through accessibility. The oversight and accountability is basically capturing what the subgroup is doing, which is not only working towards providing a fair, supportive, and encouraging environment, but also conducting audits and provide recommendation to Geo governments and administrations. The community leadership is an advocacy, is really to reach out within the sector and try to get a maximum representation from all walks of life within Geo so that you attract the right and a diverse perspective and make it clear that this is an inclusive environment where participation is really sought through to eventually change and advance Earth observation and its use in different sectors. The welcoming and supportive environment, this is all about thinking about different things that you can do to, as I was previously saying, not only attract but retain diversity. And that means thinking about what you could do during meetings, during events, and also making it clear how people can enter the Geo community and how they can find their space and evolve their space. Outreach and engagement is about communication to the wider range of stakeholder to really increase engagement with Geo outputs and increase the relevance and the use of those data and product. And empowerment through accessibility is really about making advancing transparency and accessibility of all those Geo products to the widest range of stakeholders, making it helping getting people to access the information that they need, whether it's a model, an output, or a product. This statement was followed by a consultation where we tried to see whether this resonates with people. And here, what I'm sneakingly doing is also saying that if you have any feedback on this, please let us know because we're still hearing about that statement. Hopefully, it provides a starting point for really having mainstreaming equality, diversity, and inclusion discussion in Geo, but also for starting to hear and address issue related, for example, to accessibility, representation, and transparency. What else are we up to apart from writing EDI statements? We are a lot in a listening mode. As you, as you've seen, the EDI discussions are relatively new in Geo. It's not even two years, two years old. So there's a lot to do about trying to capture what are, what people are worried about or what are they concerned about. So we've done a lot of surveys, of consultation with different Geo regions. And we have recently appointed a Geo Equality, Diversity, and Inclusion contact point so that people know where to go if there's any issue around Geo practices. Then we have been doing a lot of work around monitoring framework as of what do we monitor? What kind of indicators do we take and tracks through time to see whether we are reaching the vision established in the EDI statement? There's a lot of trust building to do because whenever you start something new and you address something as huge as equality, diversity, and inclusion, you need to make sure that people know that you're more than ticking boxes and paper statements. And that we do through reporting not only on what we do and what, and doing something that's really at the core of what we're trying to, where we're trying to focus our effort, and also to try to identify those initiatives or those things that we can change or facilitate that have the positive actions and that where the impact is felt throughout Geo. And then the last one is around networking building. So Geo is not the only one concerned about equality, diversity, and inclusion. There is a lot of very good idea, good initiative, and a lot of impetus and motivation to change, to change the way we interact and work to make things more inclusive. So for the moment, and I think throughout, we will continue to try to engage with like-minded organization initiative as well as connecting with other subgroup and working group who themselves have started on an ad hoc basis discussion around equality, diversity, and inclusion. So to summarize, why am I talking to you about the EDI subgroup here? The first one is, the first point is that I want to make you aware that this exists because this is a good contact point for trying to, if you have any issue with interacting with the Geo community, making it clear to you that generational diversity is one of the priority for the subgroup. So you have all the motivation and the effort of all that subgroup team to try to help you solve problems if you have one, you want to discuss one. Then the second one is about connection and input. So for, if you have any idea about things that we could do or facilitate to increase our representation of the different generation within Geo activity, but then we really want to hear from you. And then the last one is representation. So as you can imagine, there's not a bunch of young people sitting with us at the subgroup. So if you, if you are interested, you're an early career professional, and you're interested in EDI issues and want to help, I also want to hear from you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Thank you for this, for this great presentation. I think it absolutely aligns with what we're trying to do here. And of course, everybody is welcome to join, and we welcome the efforts of everybody and to link with the Geo community and Geo in general, which sometimes is, well, Geo as an international organization might not be very clear on how it works, et cetera. So this is also something that we can clarify if there are questions from the audience. I see a question from Flavia in the Q and A to you, Natalie. And she asks, Natalie, thank you for the excellent presentation. Do you have any event or program to encourage diversity in the private sector? So I'll just let you answer this one. Thanks.
Oh, Flavia, never ask a question where the answer is, I need to hear more from you, because no, we don't. But I would love to have a help in this. So we haven't, for the moment, really thought about how to engage with the private sector within the EDI space because we have been spending so much time trying to put those kind of pillars in place and those structure in place. But I think it is, it is a really good idea to try to think about different sector and how to approach them in a way that makes sense to them. So no, but would love to hear from you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see that Yana also complimented this answer. Maybe, Yana, do you want to, you on the mic?
I was just saying that I've noticed that we have representatives from Trimble on, on the platform here. And Trimble is really considered one of the leaders in the private sector, at least in this domain, in terms at least in this domain, in terms of diversity at the workplace. So perhaps representative from Trimble could share a few ideas and answer Flavia's question.
Yes, thanks. So please, if anyone from Trimble wants to speak, please raise your hand and we can invite you on stage. Okay, let me hand the mic to Albert. Hello, Albert. Can you, yes, I see that your mic is up.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you, Yana. Yes, actually, we do have some initiatives when it comes to DEI. And under the umbrella of WGIC, the World GeoSpecial Industry Council, we do have a committee on DEI and I'm actually the chair of that committee. And we put together a white paper early this year and we are actually working on our plan for, from December of this year until, you know, next year. So we have a white paper that we can share with you, Natalie, that explains the position of the private sector on the geo-special private sector when it comes to DEI. The only difference between you and us, and maybe we're going to address that offline, is that we don't do, we don't use equality, we use equity. So DEI for us is diversity, equity and inclusion, not diversity, equality. And we can talk a little bit about the difference between equality and equity and why we prefer equity to equality. And this afternoon, I mean afternoon, whatever, during the industry track today, Valerie Grant, who is part of that committee within WGIC, will have a presentation on DEI, but that's through the WGIC point of view.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Albert. And of course, I invite everybody here to follow the industry track this afternoon, which is also on air meeting. You will find all the information in the platform. Thank you very much. So let me now share again my screen to enter the discussion. So Francis, I will share the screen here and up to you. So maybe you can first introduce yourself and then to start the discussion. Thank you very much.
Greetings, all of you. My name is Francis Omundi, as you can see on the screen shared. That's my bio and I am glad to be taking part in this year's youth track, actually the first one. And it is all of us, we aim to forming this community, this first geo-youth community of practice, which will be launched so that we as young people who are enthusiasts in matters space and just special, that we can now come up with strategies that will help us go forward. So now, we are actually just going to hit it directly now. No, we are a community of young people and we want to see how is it that having a youth community of practice help us to be included in the, in GIO. So if you have any suggestion or an idea on how we can do this, you can post it on the chats. Alternatively, you can also raise your hand so that you can speak in directly to the session. We are, we are glad that it is in such a fora that we have a person who sits on the board of GIO and also the director. So this one means that we can actually get feedback and results and also the affirmations of what we want real time. So that's an advantage for us. So I'll call upon all of us. Now, let's bring this community of practice. What are, what are some of the things that we need to do together? So that, as Yana had mentioned earlier, that we live in an environment and whichever decisions we make that matters to the environment, they are sound and they are underpinned by Earth observation. So that's, that's, that's one thing that I would like to emphasize. So all of you, you are welcome. So probably, Yana, you can share with us, maybe what are some of the community spaces that do exist within GIO? Because, so that our, our participants can find our way, can have an abstract idea or overview of what exists. Thank you.
Okay, I think I can do that. And before I go to that, perhaps I'll also just call out one, one outcome from just recently concluded COP26 Conference of the Parties of UNFCC, which everybody obviously was following. You know, just so we know that engaging with the youth is just, is not a nice-to-do thing, it's a must-to-do thing. You know, one of the conclusions of subsidiary bodies of UNFCC, subsidiary body on scientific and technical advice, produced a conclusion document after its plenary, which among several things actually highlighted and called for greater contribution by the youth into the decision-making towards meeting national climate action. So the call is there. It's not a matter of do we choose to engage with the youth? It's, we must engage with you. It's just how and where do it and how do we do this effectively under the theme of accelerating action? So how do we accelerate the youth's contribution within GIO? You know, one thing to say about GIO and we are fairly agile and nimble and adaptable. We, if we don't have processes, we can create processes. We want to be creating processes that are conducive to results. So communities of practice have in fact been these great processes that have sort of sprung up when there was need for them. We have a community of practice of health. And that's where health practitioners from around the world, they really are practitioners as well as scientists and everyone in between, they gather in this virtual space as a community to do a number of things. They just create awareness about activities, about events. They do sort of flash presentations, lightning presentations on topics that they pre-identify. These communities obviously do rely on a handful of people who are willing to put in the time to act as a glue and the little engine that keeps this thing going. In our case, as you said, Francis, at the secretariat, we're quite serious about this. And so we already have some people in the secretariat, Florian, for example, being one, who is going to be one of our intrepid wheels in this engine. So we already have that. It's just going to take that little bit of ignition to, for instance, at a very, very minimum, to say, you know what, next time, let's chat one month from today and let's make the topic of our chat, fill in the blank. Whatever, you know, you can even put it in the poll, you know, put a couple of suggested themes. That can get things going. It's really oftentimes about just striking that first conversation. We had other communities of practice who happened to become created again to get initial conversations going. And then after two, three years, they sort of crystallized an actual activity, an actual initiative, which now is a very stable, very steady activity that produces operational results. But it happened because there was that community that came together driven by the motivation of a few individuals. And because it provided for systematic engagement opportunity, people started to return to those meetings. So that's what I would suggest. We have the platform. We have the young people who are willing to be the watchman and the little engine to keep this going. So put it on a steady cadence, identify just a couple of topics and just keep this conversation alive and see where the journey takes you. That's part of the fun.
Thank you, thank you, Yana, for that exhaustive and very detailed explanation. Now, as you can hear, that already the space is there. The young people, we are there. So that's a wake-up call to all of us. We need to come together and do, and do this thing. Natalie, under the GIO EDIs, there are some of the roles that are there in the EDI statement, including oversight and accountability. We also have community leadership and advocacy. Would you kindly share more, share more on how GIO is probably doing it, especially on the aspect of community leadership and advocacy? Thank you.
Hi, Francis. I am not totally sure I am the best to give you an overview of how GIO work on this because I tend to focus on the EDI part of this. But I would believe, so I would believe Yana would be better than me on this. Where it relates to possibly what I'm doing is that I think there probably more could be done to look at how we could have advocacy and leadership that also permeates through platforms that are relevant to youth. Something that will probably need to develop in the future. But I think Yana will be better at say to how in general GIO advocates and builds advocacy and leadership within Earth observation, probably through all the representation of all the different actors that feeds into GIO, probably also through coming as observer or partners or stakeholders in a number of convention and agreements. But, Yana, please do it. You'll be better than me.
Well, I think you were very much on the money. And I would invite anyone else who is in the audience and has seen GIO advocacy in action actually offer your testimony and observation. I'll just also say that indeed, it is through our various communities that we have within GIO. We have regional networks and I see there is a comment here that as a community practice, we can do joint activities to learn and share across regions. Absolutely. We have regional networks in the Americas, in Africa, in Asia, Oceania, in Europe. And we also do a lot of advocacy through digital media, through just communication channels and tools. So we use any and all really modes, working through our institutional networks, working through our people networks and working through communication channels as well as the official channels, obviously, through various statements, presentations, participation in the events. I hope that answers.
Yeah, that one, that one actually, it does more than answering. It actually seals, it gives a seal to everything that Natalie has actually said and all of us are, we actually got it well. So now, I'm glad that we are having, we from
Francis, I'm sorry, but you're a bit, I think your internet connection is not so good because you're breaking, breaking out. Okay, so Francis lost his connection, so hopefully you will.
So I think that is also one of the, one way we can actually come together.
Francis, I'm sorry, but you were disconnected for a few seconds here. We could not hear you since you started again. I would, just if you're okay to keep on this, on this, on the topic that was raised before, maybe to invite Mary Nakumose from Women in Gias Uganda to speak more about their work because I know that they're mentoring. They have some experience in mentoring. Unfortunately, she cannot join the stage. So maybe, Mary, you can put in the chat some reflection of yours about this. And back to you, Francis. Sorry.
Sorry, sorry for that. And thank you very much for, Florian, for coming in instantly. So yes, we, these communities, we can actually get to work together with them, you know, and also get to share experiences because different geographies present different realities. And this is one thing that we cannot put aside because at the end of it all, we need to have this community of practice. It is one community that we entail to actually ensure that all things that pertains to Earth observation, whether it is in policy, it is in activism, it is in data action or data analysis, everything as well. So mentorship, actually, I give it a very, a very big tick for it. And yes, we can do it. What's your view on that? Maybe Natalie, Yana?
So question is what we can do to account for the various differences while also doing something together? Did they understand the question?
Yes, yes, yes. That's it.
You know, that, that actually is a good, very, very good thing to explore at one of the future events, for instance, because in GIO, we do often speak about this constant, it's like a rubber band, you know? It goes like up and down. It's, you know, we talk about global action or setting global frameworks that really at the end of the day need to inform action on the ground. So, and vice versa, what are we observing and doing on the national level, at the local level, that can then inform the need to coordinate on a global level? So GIO is a global community, but in the end, we know we want to be part of the solutions that take place at very much local scale. So this constant global to local and from local to global iteration is an interesting construct, I think, to think about. So as you gather representatives from different regions that really speak from their very much local or regional experiences, it's good to then see what or which nuggets of all of those shared experiences could benefit from some kind of a global coordination, global international messaging and identify those as the sorts of actions that the youth can drive through a community of practice of a global organization like GIO.
And I think just to add to this, every time you're looking, so to advance the use of Earth observation in a meaningful way, there's different things that need to be in place, right? You need the right product, the right people, the right question, the right advocacy. And then you have all the equality, diversity and inclusion that feeds into it. And because, and it permeates through it. Because if you don't have the right voices represented, you basically might develop a project that is not useful. If you are not aware of those kind of data, you miss it and then your product is less good. So every time, you have to also connect the dots for every, every aspect of that overall thinking that comes together to eventually advance Earth observation usefulness. And so when it comes to equality, diversity and inclusion, that's very much what we're doing right now. As you pointed out, different region, different people, different community within region, different problems. So there's a lot of work that is going right now in our subgroup to try to map out this. So not only to hear from those different community, to hear about what, what the issues are, but also to be aware of what exists in terms of solution readiness that you don't reinvent the wheel. But, and that's something that GIO has always done very well. It's to try to connect the dots to have that momentum effect together instead of trying to recreate something while something else, somewhere else is working already absolutely fine and would benefit from that exposure or connection to work even better. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, it does. And many thanks for that. So now, we have, we have a question here from Larson, who says that called the national agencies and also companies be part of an internship system in part coordinated by GIO for young professionals. He goes further to add that having these in place could secure a local activity and also GIO affiliation. And he goes ahead to even say it further that it will help secure local funding and ownership. So share with us, is this doable? So share with us, is this doable?
Well Francis, if you're asking me, I can't say it's doable nor, but I will say I had a similar thought in my mind, thinking that that is, that is a mechanism we could explore with our, with the leads of the various sectors in, within GEO. So if we record this as sort of one of the questions or one of the opportunities that could promote the agenda of the youth community practice, then we can pose this question inside the various parts of GEO. So for instance, we can certainly talk with our associates who are in most cases, private companies within GEO. If a construct like that would fit with the internship programs they have, we can also talk within the GEO executive committee and in a number of places. So I don't have an answer, but I think it's a really good question and a really good thing to target. The GEO intern.
Yeah, sure, sure. That's, that's very interesting. So.
Francis, this is Florian. In the Q and A, we have a question from Alex about can I ask who counts as youth community? Is there a particular age boundary or is it based on the number of years they have been involved in the sector? May I answer it? Because actually in the, in the design of this youth track and youth community of practice, we really want it to be as inclusive as possible. So first of all, I think, well, we didn't define a threshold age from which you are not welcome anymore. Because of course, as we said in the beginning of this, of this session, we don't want, well, we want to be this youth-led and youth-focused, but we need also people at a more, most senior, more senior level to, that are involved in GEO work program activities or in the governance of GEO. This is not just a closed loop we want to do. We really want to, to create space in GEO in all of its, in all of its parts. In all, wherever GEO is active, we want to maybe to find links and solutions for the, for the young people. So no clear definition, everybody is welcome to join, but the, the focus of course is on youth and early career people, students, interns, et cetera, and just to, to open some doors that are not open at the moment or to facilitate their, their access. And about this, I will just stop sharing my screen now and launch a poll. So to ask the audience, what is your age? So I, I, can you see it on the, on the big screen? Let me just show on stage. So please, if you can go to the polls tab in, in the conversation, just next to the chat and Q and A and answer it. And as you can see, it will display, it will, it will display live. So we'll just let a few seconds for it and at that point I'll hand it over back to you Francis. Thank you. Hello Francis, are you still here? Yes, okay, thanks. So maybe we just go into the, the last part because time is running out and Yana has to, to leave. So thanks Yana and we'll see each other soon and please, and thank you for your contribution today. Thanks.
So thank you, thank you Yana, thank you Florian. So thank you Natalie. Some of the things that we have, you know, number one, the aspect of working together with community-based organizations, associations, like for instance, the women in GIES. So that is one take home that we are going forward with. Another aspect that we have is the possibility of exploring the aspect of offering internship with a GEO tag. So that there is that aspect of affiliation. So that is also one, one, one take home that we are going with towards the end of this event. We, we, we are happy and glad to, to have all of you here and the suggestions and the questions that all of you are raising. It's actually enlightening and also giving us a very new and dimension of looking at things towards making the world a better place. So as we, as we summarize, Natalie, I would like to give you a few seconds to just give us a patting shot.
So my, my punching line of the end would be if you're interested in helping and either to want to feel in ideas as to how you could see something working in terms of creating the space for, for youth to come in, or if you're interested in EDI in general and GEO, I want to support the subgroup, just get in touch. That, that's my take home message.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Natalie. Thank you once again. In Kenya, we say asante sana, that is Swahili. So asante sana. And to the fellow participants, yes. If you want to be involved, kindly get in touch. So from my end, here from the heart of the opportunities there are Kenya, thank you very much.
Thank you Francis, thank you very much. And before everyone leaves, so we'll just have a couple of, of closing remarks. So I thank you for the people who posted in the chat and answered the poll. I will launch another one here, just so you know, so, so that, to, to get to know what are regarding the GEO engagement priorities, which one match is, is matching best the expertise you have. So let's, let me show it on the stage and please go to the same tab as before to, to vote. So we'll, we'll see among the sustainable development goals, the disaster risk reduction and the climate action, which one, which expert, what expertise do we have in the audience? So we'll just give a couple of minutes for this. Okay, so the, the poll is still open, so you can go at any time in the dedicated tab. I will start sharing my screen again, just to give you a brief highlight of what is coming on in the, in the week. So as I said before, the, the youth track is not only this event, it's for, it's four events throughout the week. So the next events will be on Wednesday, November 24th. We will have a cross-regional dialogue between the Americas and Africa with a few presentation from Women in GIES Uganda and students from the Americas region, linked with, some of them linked with GEO gloves. Then we will have a similar format for day three on Thursday, 25th of November, a cross-regional dialogue between Europe, the Commonwealth of Independent States and Asia-Oceania. So as here again, we will have some national perspective as well as more regional ones. And long time for discussion during these two, these two events. Just take a note that the, the day three, due to technical reason, will be hosted in Zoom, but all the details will be available in Air Meet, so don't worry about this. And finally, on Friday, we will have our last meeting of the week, which will also be hosted in Zoom due to technical reasons. We will have a presentation from the youth indigenous perspective and then we will wrap up the week with the input that all the audience have put together during the, the previous events. And we will launch the community of practice. So for this, we will launch the community of practice based on the objective and focus area that you have indicated. So we have some first insights today, but please make sure to participate in the two next event and please to continue this dialogue and to make sure that the community of practice responds to your expectations, your aspirations and is actually driven by the community that we're building with these events. So for this, we will need volunteers to lead on the specific tasks that we started to, to speak about today and we will continue. So please, and for the, the community of practice in general. So please make sure to, to, if you want to volunteer, please just write an email to me and put my email in the chat. Make sure to do so by the end of this week so that we, on Friday, we are all set to, to, to have all, some key objectives and people who want to, to lead and we can discuss this on Friday. And yeah, that's, that's it for me. So thank you very much. I'm, I really like, like this first session and as Yana said, this is just the first attempt. We will continue these calls and we will make sure that the, the community that has gathered today and will continue to gather is included, inclusive and everybody is welcome. So as I said before, please keep, keep joining our calls and if you want to volunteer, please let us know and I will follow up with you. I'll stop sharing my screen and thank Yana, Natalie and Francis for this very nice event. And thank you for your participation and I think it's, yeah, it's looking promising, so please stay on and have a good rest of the day, evening, morning, wherever you are in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Florian.
Bye, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, thank you Florian, thank you Natalie, pass my regards to Yana. Bye.
Thank Francis, bye bye.
Bye bye.